America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, welcome to our August 4 meeting. Please note that everyone's in attendance except for Mr. Halifasco. Of course, I want to welcome everyone here. And our first item on our agenda is items from council. And before I, let me, I don't want to forget, we need to pull D4 from the consent agenda. And also, I don't, wouldn't imagine there being objections to that, E7, which is on the very end, we probably should just move that to the last thing of the meeting after we have our city manager reports and any other budget discussions. So, I'd like to plan on moving, just doing E7 at the very end, and then we'll pull D4 separately. That's all I had. Council, y'all, I know Ms. Scott has one thing. Council, y'all had anything else?
Yes. Are you asking for council communication right now?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I had a lady that's been calling me about her water bill. I didn't think anything of it till I got my water bill. My water bill says I owe so much. When we went to pay it, they said we owed more. And she says she's been having this problem for a while. So, we need to look at our computer systems to see what's going on, because I show a previous balance, a payment, there's nothing left to do, but when we go pay the bill, it's more. And there were several people in there today trying to pay their bills, they were having the same problem. So, I don't know if it's just something that started, or it's been going on.
Actual response?
We, yes, we have had a couple of, of reports of that, and what we believe it was, was the installation of the new billing software. We're printing bills out of the new billing software, but we were still running the, the, out of the old website, which was based off our, of our AS400. So, there was a couple of discrepancies. As of today, we are now running our website from the new third-party payment provider. So, all those issues should be, should be worked out.
We paid this today.
I'm sorry?
We paid this today.
Yes, ma'am. That, that, that website just got updated probably, I'd say, three, three o'clock today.
Okay.
So, I'm hoping that all that's been corrected, but if you have anybody else that has that problem, just call the office and we'll take care of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Another thing was, coming down Main Street, right in front of 700 Main, there's no striping there, and the people are having trouble, because you know how you have your straight lanes that are coming over here and then the left-hand turn? People are getting in the left-hand turn, thinking they're going straight, and then, you know. So, I've had complaints about that.
There's a sign there, isn't it? I see that all the time, too. There's a sign.
Yeah, so, have they started striping anywhere yet?
They're striping. I'm at Land, do you know?
We had a frequent discussion meeting today with this striping company. So, they haven't started the new project yet. I think it's going to be September when they actually mobilize and start, but we'll, we will address that Main Street issue during.
Okay. Do you know where they're going to start at? So, that will be kind of?
They're going to start on Mockingbird first.
Mockingbird?
Yes.
Okay, appreciate it.
It's really interesting, when Main stops there, at 59 Business, before you cross over to One Way, so many people turn left out of the two lanes.
Mm-hmm.
I see it almost every single morning, they're turning left from the middle lane, and that's not supposed to happen. There's signs for that, or they still do it, so, anyway. Okay. Anything else, Ms. Celeese?
I don't know, I think that's it.
Okay. Ms. Scott, you want to talk about the crossing?
I, I do want to talk about the crossing, and actually, I'm realizing that there are two intersections, because people are telling me that not only is Stockbauer a problem, but they're telling me that Ben Jordan is equally a problem. And I have had some people that said, you know, I was taught to look both ways before crossing the street, and I want to start with that. I was taught that, too, and I want to encourage everybody to look both ways, no matter what street you're crossing, because we do have people crossing all over town. But still and all, the, if the crossing is going to be closed, then let's close it. And if it's going to be open, and we're going to let people use it, then let's look at ways to, to make it safer. Additionally, well, let me go back to, if it's going to be closed, let's close it. I'm really starting to think, as I've kind of evaluate all of this, Stockbauer, I think, is the most dangerous, because the traffic is going so much faster. And if anybody thinks that a yellow caution light means that traffic is supposed to stop, I think they need to go back and read the rules of traffic, because I don't think that's what a caution light is for. It's letting you know that somebody might be crossing, and I'm kind of jumping around here. But I'm really thinking that perhaps the trail ought to end at Stock, at the Stockbauer end, coming from Ben Jordan. And I'm almost visualizing some signage that, that at Ben Jordan, it says the trail end is this way, and then we paint a little roundabout at the end there. And if you want to go on to East High School, that you turn to the right at Ben Jordan. And that would take you directly to the traffic light, and then you could continue on up on the other side. I don't know, those are just, I'm not a traffic engineer or hike and bike expert, but I think that we need to do something. I'm concerned about the safety, a lot of people are. But also, a lot of people are concerned, that people are just having this false sense of security, that if, if the hike and bike trail is here, and it's across the street, it must be safe to cross here. And that would be at all of the, all of the crossings. Does anybody have any other thoughts, or?
Emmett looks deep in thought.
Well, I understand that both of those crossings are at the curb, or the curvature of the street, and that's why it's so difficult. So, I agree that if we close them, it'd probably be better, that would make the people go to the stoplight, because that curve, you can't see somebody coming, and you can't see somebody, you know, you can look one way, look the other way, and bang, there's a car right there.
I, I've seen, in some cities, I've seen just flags that you can pick up on one side of the street, and kind of wave the flag as you cross the street, and leave it on the other side. And I think that's great, and because people wear clothes that you can't always see them. I think all of those are great safety considerations, but the biggest thing, if we're going to have a hike and bike trail that's not going to go under the street, and, and I'm not proposing that we do that at this point, just money-wise, I really think we have to expect and demand more citizen responsibility, or just take away those possibilities.
Just a point of information, we did close it.
Right.
We did close it, and the kids continued to cross.
Which is?
I'm not going to change, I just want to make sure everybody understands that.
Which is why I think some signage that says trails end would just nail that a little bit more firmly, because it's, it's sort of closed, but sort of isn't. I've driven by and said, oh, it looks like I can get in there. So, it looks like cars can't drive down it, but people can.
Well, I can add comments. Do you want to go first, Mr. Alvarez?
Well, I mean, I found myself doing the same thing, driving, realizing, oh, I'm coming up to this crossing, when I'm almost on top of it. So, I don't know what else you'd do to warn drivers, to slow down, a speed limit reduction, I don't know. I thought we had put those rumble things on there at one point, and they were too noisy, they were taken away. And there's been other attempts to try to resolve that, but I don't know, the speed limit.
Well, we recently just got the speed limit the same on that long stretch there, by correcting some areas, so.
Well, if you do a speed warrant study, it probably would not warrant lowering, lowering the speed limit in that area. That's, it's a major thoroughfare, and you're moving a lot of vehicles on there. If we, we can close the trail, and take out the curb cut, and take up the striping, and remove the signs, and discourage people from crossing there, I, I agree with the mayor, people will still cross. It's whether we're encouraging or discouraging them.
While we're putting up all the, the striping, maybe striping, give, 300 yards, I don't know how many yards away from that crossing, saying that that's a crossing, you know, pedestrian crossing, whatever the acronym, or whatever you would use, lay down some striping on the street, yards away, before you get to the crossing, for the benefit of the, of the cars.
But if it's closed, you are, then you're urging, you're sending a, I think, a signal. It's closed, but we're warning you that?
Well, you close it all you want to, but it's not stopping people from crossing.
I just, no, I just.
And you're talking about not only John Stockbauer, but you're talking about, sorry, Ben, Ben Jordan, and then the other street, what's the other one? Airline, maybe?
It goes over Maori and Airline.
You've got three, actually, or four streets, really. I don't know, just food for thought.
If, let me add to the discussion, you know, as a community, we have to expect a certain amount of rational behavior from our citizens. We simply cannot accommodate, you know, poor decisions or bad behavior. Otherwise, we could wall in every street, or raise every road, we just can't do that. It's not practical. So, we have to expect a reasonable effort of safety. You know, we've had fatalities, we haven't had any fatalities there, we had the one at the Ben Jordan crossing. We've had two or three at 59 Business by HEB, there's no trail there. We've had people die there. So, you know, we haven't been able to get anything changed there specifically. We can't encourage people to go down to the light and cross. That's at Laurent and 59, you know, where the Doreen Schnitzel, all that over there. We've had fatalities in other parts of town where there's no trail, simply because, you know, poor judgment, I would say. The issue at this crossing, the fact that, and people will criticize us, oh, it shouldn't ever been there. Maybe so, but it is. And we have to deal with it, and the citizens have to deal with it. Short of, you know, bulldozing some concrete, and just closing it completely, and walling that off, you know, but I don't think anybody wants to do that, because I don't want to punish the people that do know how to cross safely, and don't have a problem with it. I, myself, has crossed there, I'll bet you at least 100 times, all at night. I stopped and waited for the cars to be clear. The issue is, when we originally set it up, in my opinion, is it's ambiguous. Drivers don't know what to do. We took out the flashing light at John Stockbauer, I think it helped. The issue, you know, I, I have drivers say, well, I don't know what to do, I slowed down, and I stopped for a guy that's standing there in the curb, and then the car in the next lane comes along. I ask them, did you do that on Navarro, when you see someone crossing Navarro? Does all six lanes of traffic stop to let a guy cross Navarro? Well, no. Well, then why do you do that there? We, we should try to encourage the responsibility on one part or the other. You can't put it on the car unless you have a red light. They're not going to stop. And I don't think we can start putting full signalization for the cars for a person to cross. It's not even legal, probably. So, having said that, I could see some improvements on the trail to tell pedestrians, you have to stop. Don't just stroll on out. The, the younger folks, and I remember when I was a kid in high school, they're walking in groups, they sometimes will have that habit of just walking into traffic, you know. It's hard to mitigate that. And I did, I have a picture of, James, can you put that up? Someone sent me this, and it's really good, and it's a very similar situation, I think he's going to put it up there. To our trail, if you'll notice, this is in Katy, Texas. There's a concrete trail, you see a little traffic competing there on one end, just like we have. It's a road, there's, looks like maybe a ditch next to it. Notice, no crosswalk. And the stop sign is for the pedestrians. Stop. That's as, that's as much as we can do as a community, is tell them to stop, don't walk into traffic. And there, I've heard other good suggestions about, you can add to that. I would suggest a stop sign for pedestrians, and you can add another sign that says, you know, traffic does not stop, cross traffic. I've heard that suggestion from staff and others. That would be fairly inexpensive, straightforward communication to the pedestrian, it's your responsibility to stop, and look both ways. I wouldn't advocate necessarily busting the curb out, you know, which is what you're talking about, the.
What's on the curb?
I would just leave that, the, you know, if y'all think we could pull up the crosswalk, we can, we can leave it. I don't, I'm indifferent on the crosswalk. I don't really want to take jackhammers and break out that curb cut there, because bicyclists will want to cross there. If they do it right, by stopping, making sure it's clear and waiting, they're going to want that curb cut, and it's going to be smooth for them. So, I would advocate adding some signage, perhaps. You know, where the fatality was on Ben Jordan, we had a flashing light. I think that was a very sad, unfortunate situation, where, you know, and I wasn't there, I don't know the exact circumstances, but the light didn't obviously make a difference, the flashing light. Matter of fact, like I've said again, I'll repeat it, it adds to the ambiguity, the confusion. The drivers aren't really sure what to do, you know? So, let's put it all on one part or the other. In my, in my case, it would be put on the pedestrian, in, in their decision-making. Do y'all want to maybe add some signage? Would that, Ms. Scott, what do you think?
At a minimum. I'm just wondering, I mean, I, I think your idea is a good one, I think my idea is a good one, too. I don't think both of them together is a good idea.
Which idea, you mean?
Of, of just saying, no, this is the end of the trail.
What would that look like? And I'm just for sake of discussion, well, when you say end of the trail, is that a sign, or what is that?
Yeah, primarily a sign. There just happens to be a trail on the other side of the street that's not connected.
Well.
Doesn't make a lot of sense, I know.
They're going to cross anyway. I mean, we probably agree, people are going to walk across, that's, the kids are going to use it.
Well, and, and that's why, while I see what you're saying there, I really think that if we, if the, they're coming from Ben Jordan, I really think that there's an opportunity there, to direct people that plan to go across, to direct them down Ben Jordan to that intersection, which could alleviate. I think there's several different types of people that cross at that point. If it's the schoolchildren, we really do want them at the cross, at the intersection. If it's joggers or bikers that are going at night, when there's not a lot of traffic, that may be a different situation.
Yeah. What about just a sign, then, at that point, that would say, recommended crossing for John Stockbauer, and arrow, you know, to signal crossing? I think just, I agree with you, I think I'd put it on the pedestrian to make sure, I think John Stockbauer might be the worst with just the speed and the quantity of cars, but it's at every one. And if you can direct them to that light at the Ben Jordan, and say, signalized cross.
Or in the Mockingbird. You can go either way.
Right.
I would, and.
And then the stop sign at Stockbauer makes sense.
But I don't think closing the trail, or saying it's end of the trail, because what's, what's the point of having disjointed?
Well, if you.
Hike and bike trails everywhere, I'm not.
My next question about closing it. What is that mechanically, physically? What is that, a two-foot concrete wall? I don't understand, what do you, short of?
We would do a railing.
Okay. Handrail? And the kids will go around it? Okay. See, I believe kids will go around there. I just, they're going to take the shortest route to school. That's what I believe, that's my opinion, so.
I would suggest let us come, come back and look at some additional signage, to make sure the pedestrian knows that traffic's not stopping, and maybe look at, you know, directing on the trail, that they can go, you know, south or north to hit Mockingbird or Ben Jordan. I think we can come up with some signage, and since it's on our hike and bike trail, we can kind of do what we want to.
Is lighting an issue at night? Is lighting an issue?
It's lit. No, I think it's lit. So, now, and I think the lighting right there at John Stockbauer was pretty good, at that mid-block area, too, there is a street light there, so.
And I, I appreciate you bringing it up. It's always, there's nothing wrong with talking about any of these issues, and maybe a few signs will make a big improvement, you know? It's not a unique problem to us, I was in Austin about 10 days ago for business, watching the news, and in the prior week, they were talking about this on the news, in the prior seven days, they had four fatalities by pedestrians. It happens, it's very tragic, but, so, I, I think, you know, we're going to make the best effort we can, and go forward. So, perhaps if you come up with a, some suggestions, make sure Ms. Scott is aware of them, and share them with us, we don't need to decide on that up here, y'all can just do it.
Be glad to. Be glad, too.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. All right, we're still in items from councils, or anything else? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move into citizens' communication, and we had someone had their hand up, now's the time, you can come up.
I was going to say something about the trail.
Well, come on up, but come on up, that's okay. Just come up to the podium, name and address for the record, and try to.
Stan Hamlin, 101 Maplewood, I've been using that trail since they built it, and everything you guys said is all right, you know. The worst one is, you gotta, gotta be Stockbauer, because of all the traffic. It can be very confusing, especially for somebody on bicycle. If you don't get off and walk your bike, you're going to get in trouble sooner or later. But Ben Jordan, there's another, there's another thing about Ben Jordan that I think you ought to know, is when I had the most trouble, that curve, that, if you're going north, okay, the curve back to the left, the big sweeping curve, when that grass does not get mowed down there, and they're, and they're coming at 45 miles an hour, it can be a little quick for you. So, that's, that's all I want to say.
So, citizens' communication is still open? Just come on up to the podium, and try to, out of courtesy to everyone else, limit, and try to limit your comments to five minutes, just out of courteous to everyone, please, sir.
I'll try to keep it under five minutes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Arden Vesely. I'm a, a snowbird that got lost in Texas. I have a lot of friends down here in Texas, and I want to get right to the subject. And the subject is, I've been in Victoria, I have been a victim of planned obsolescence marketing. Now, a lot of you people don't know what planned obsolescence marketing is. But I got about 70 years of working in manufacturing, doing engineering, drafting, design, recording, from my first job, working with the government for Conver Astronautics, recording, documentation work for an Atlas missile launch pad. From there on on, I have worked in manufacturing in many different ways. And one of the precautions, I have always been told to not plan things to fail before their purpose. That's planned obsolescence. This is about as crooked and dangerous as Isaacs turning, cutting people's heads off, because it hurts the public. Now, unknowingly, we have an auto dealership right here in this community, that I had purchased an automobile from, and I see by their actions that they are also a contributor to the planned obsolescence. And that just comes from Toyota Manufacturing. My, the vehicle I had purchased is built to cause people grief and money. Underneath that Sienna is a piece of fabric that hangs down five inches, about clears the road by about five inches. This is intended to catch on that roadblock when you drive up to it, so that it catches on that, maybe it'll catch when you're turning around in some driveway, on some object. Well, it's intended to do that, because it's fastened up by plastic pushpins underneath, and it's also attached to the front grille of that Sienna, so that when this thing fell down, such as it did, in a winter blizzard in Iowa, when I backed up, it pulled loose the wheel covers on both sides, and almost tore the front nose cover off of the vehicle before I stopped. Now, this is all caused by a serviceman in Victoria, serviceman for Victoria, Toyota Victoria, that put water in a reservoir for the window washers, that froze up and inhibited me of a clear view. I had to stop in the middle of a snowstorm to clear the window. When I did, a chain of things happened, and, you know, they won't be responsible for the damages they caused from their negligence of servicing. Now, I've had two people, Cliff Wright was one, he was, and he's not there anymore. There's another one here, Jesse, that services it, he's gone. Every time I go in there, they got a different serviceman. But nobody will talk to me in Toyota, no management, I don't know who runs the place, they won't tell me. I paid good money for that vehicle, and I expect it to be treated honestly by the service people. What can a person do? If they don't want to give you service, what's the, what is a person supposed to do? You know? Go and leave? I can't go to the next door, because they own that place, too. You know? So, this isn't the first time I run across this type of thing. It comes from the big factories, they run the small distributors, they teach the mechanics what to do, and they also teach the salespeople how to sell that product, by offering discounts, which you don't really get. Folks, if you want more information, I'll be glad to show you the pictures, I'll show you the automobile, I'll show you exactly what happened, and there's a lot more automobiles on this road. It's coming from the, from the manufacturer. It's not the, it's not the distributor's fault. I mean, they're, they're, they're good people, they try. But when they are, are dictated by a manufacturer in this country, that makes, makes for all over the nation, and they don't do it only for the distributor here in this community, they're doing it to other distributors across this nation. There, I got it.
Thank you, Mr. Vesely. Citizens' communication is still open? If anyone else would like to come forward? Thank you.
I can mention the hiking trail. Here's seven sheets, I didn't realize there were going to be eight of y'all, and I, I apologize. My, my name is Catherine Gleason, and I go by that intersection probably every day or every, every other day, when I go see my daughter. And I want to address something you said about getting traffic to go to Ben Jordan. As far as I know, there is no main entrance to high school there. All of it is on Mockingbird. And, but, how do you get high school students? And I used to live across from Victoria High, where I felt like the kids in my parking lot were showing my small children adult things that they shouldn't be seeing at their age, and I'm glad they put the fence around the Villa Chateau, but anyway. You're dealing with high school students. Now, joggers, of course, I know one of the late, the lady was a jogger, she wasn't a student, that was killed, but she's close to my age, and maybe we should be more careful when we're walking. But, uh, that's one thing. And then trying, trying to get them to go left to Mockingbird, to go in that main entrance, I, I agree with you, the students are going to take the shortest cut. Now, I want to admire some of, some of y'all's ideas of putting a stop sign. Also, if you put the signs, maybe if you put a median where that turn lane is in the middle, that's a five-lane street. Ben Jordan is only a two-lane street, which it should be bigger, because it goes all the way through the city. But, uh, that one's a five-lane street, that's a whole different story. And if you could put the median, then at least people could go halfway across, and make it wide enough to where they're not afraid somebody's going to whack them on the side. That's one idea. Now, my, my idea first was to put the light idea, which you had mentioned, and to put green on the walkers until they get there, and then turn red, and also have one facing the drivers that says red, but that's expensive. And, uh, and I know Victoria does not like to spend money much, so, uh, but to me, that's about the only way, and have flashing lights, because you're, you're right, that is, that is a congested area, the housing additions are on both sides of that trail, and drivers do not see them coming between the houses until they get right at. But yet, we try to make pedestrians be responsible, but all these joggers with their hot shot bodies and their earplugs, they don't hear a thing, and they don't look at anything. You know, we've even had to honk at them before, to get them out of our way. So, anyway, my, my first impression was, if you're serious about encouraging biking, I mean, or hiking trails, then you have to spend the. mean, or hiking trails, then you have to spend the money for the lights. But if you want to halfway do it, then do the median in the middle, maybe very bright paint, lights around, something to really attract attention, and maybe it might work. So, that's, that's just my suggestion. My son lives in Austin, and there's a whole lot of biking trails and hiking trails around there. But Victoria will not get landowners to donate land for any kind of recreational use. No bike trails, none of that stuff. So, I don't know. But high, high schoolers will walk wherever they want to. I know, because Victoria High, they walked all over.
Thank you, Ms. Gleason. Citizens' communication still open?
My name is Carlos Padilla. I live at 2815 East Odom Street. For this recreational stuff, you know, we don't have it down in my, my part of town. I've been through that Ben Wilson intersection one time. It looked pretty messed up. You know, it looked pretty dangerous. But a simple solution would just make overpass or underpass. You know? That would, you know, y'all spend money on all kinds of other stuff. You know, why not make it completely safe? Also, Mr. Scott, you said you were horrified. Well, I suggest you don't go down Crestwood Street. Don't go down that street, because you, you really will be horrified. And you will might need an alignment on your car. And another thing, you know, if you really want to help the public, y'all need to make an ordinance where people don't talk on the phone while they're driving. That's, that's the kind of stuff you need to, y'all need to think about, discuss. Because all this, this is just recreational stuff. You know, it's not for the public. On Crestwood Street, there is, there's a school. Those kids, they have to go down that street. Cars are trying to dodge the potholes, you know? They could hit a kid. I don't know if it has or not, but that's all I'd like to say.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla.
How are y'all today? Amanda Rocha with the Texas Zoo. I'm very sorry I missed last meeting, and I just wanted to come up here, give y'all opportunity to ask me any questions regarding hot fund stuff. And I just wanted to explain a little bit about our most recent application, as well as the one from the previous year. So, this past year, we were awarded a little over $12,000 for a couple of very specific events. They were our Cowboys and Coyotes event in September, our Bendy Irwin event, our Native American Cultural event, San Antonio Livestock Show, Earth Day in Corpus Christi, and Earth Day in McAllen. And we just had no luck at all this past season regarding weather in general. But it just so happened, these things also were really affected by a couple of other stuff. Cowboys and Coyotes was initially slated for September. Money was spent, and then new letters came out saying, hey, that's not going to be approved because it's prior to October. So, we couldn't claim any kind of hot funds for that since it was before October. Bendy Irwin got canceled because she signed a huge contract with SeaWorld. We were too close to SeaWorld, so before the final signatures went, she canceled. And that happened as well before October. So, we couldn't claim any hot funds for an event like that. Our Native American Day event actually got canceled the day before it happened due to extreme weather. Our people who are coming to present just didn't want to travel. And, you know, that's where a big conversation happened about, what do I do? I've spent, for Native American Day, I spent almost $3,000 on radio and $1,500 on billboards. And, you know, it's just, it was a big hit for us because the event's not happening, we're not going to get reimbursed. Even if we were open that day, how can I prove that someone came to the event, stayed in a hotel, when we ended up closing at noon that day? So, and also that Cowboys and Coyotes event, I spent a little over $2,000 for radio and Corpus Christi as well. So, we were spending money, and then we had a great conversation. And that's when me and Thomas chatted about the financial risk for the zoo. And of course, that's always going to be my decision. If we spend these hot funds, this could happen again, and we might get rained out. The next event we got awarded for was the San Antonio Livestock Show. At the time, we were slated to go. How am I going to prove these people are coming to visit us that day in San Antonio and coming and staying in a hotel in Victoria? So, anyway, so we had a long talk. I didn't know what I was going to do, if I was going to actually spend more money outside the community. Well, it just so happens that San Antonio Livestock Show canceled us, so there's no reason I can't, you know, get reimbursed for anything. Then the Corpus Christi Earth Day canceled as well. And McAllen was going to cancel, but they ended up getting a last-minute grant. So, we got to go. And at that point, it was like two weeks away. We're like, we'll just deal with it. So, a total, I spent $6,526. And because of circumstance, we were not able to write in for reimbursement. So, since I wasn't here, of course, you know, got a lot of communication from everyone in the world. And I just want to say that we would have loved to accept the hot funds money. We just did not have the correct documentation to be able to be awarded that money. So, for this year's application, decided not make it event-specific, make it general zoo marketing outside of our 90 miles. Because as the zoo, we get two to three hotel rooms a week that are not directly related to events, but just to come hang out at the fantastic zoo. And so that, I got rid of the financial risk, in my opinion, and went ahead and applied. So, I just wanted to clear some things up. Do you have any questions for me or anything about it? Yes, sir.
Thank you for that. You said you get two to three hotel rooms a week. How do you?
We have a sign-in.
Okay, that's what I figured.
Yeah, we have a sign-in. We use the hot funds form anyway. Since Andrea started it, before me, so we've just kept the same form up there.
Good.
Yeah. It's really neat, because you get to see where everyone's from, how many actual hotels we get. It's just fantastic. And here lately, you know, this hot funds money, even though we didn't, we didn't have it in the budget, but it was spent well, because I have seen constant influx of tourists from Corpus Christi and all that area. So, you know, ended up being very beneficial for us anyway, just unexpected. Okay?
Good.
All right. Thank y'all.
We'll see Amanda a little later in the agenda regarding her budget request, so she'll come back up later.
So, citizens' communication still open? Anyone else would like to come up and visit about anything at all? Okay? Seeing none, we'll close citizens' communication, and we'll move into ordinances.
Item C1. Excuse me. Item C1 is an ordinance amending Sections 21-32D, 21-36G, 21-3836, and 21-92A of the Victoria City Code, addressing plots for the Planning Commission, providing consistency with a storm drainage master plan, and correcting a code reference, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for codification and savings, and declaring an effective date. This is a second and third reading.
So moved?
Second.
If the motion is second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Item C2 is a resolution granting an annexation petition from DGMP Incorporated for approximately 2.686 acres of land, and authorizing the city staff to prepare an ordinance for city council consideration, and declaring an effective date.
There's a public hearing for this one.
Yes, there is.
Why don't we just do that first? We'll open the public hearing. If anyone wants to speak to this item only, now would be the time to do that. Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
So moved? Second.
Motion is second. Is there a discussion? I have a, just clarification. This was part of that annexation we were going to do earlier. Is that correct? Is that the same area? Okay. Okay, so they're asking for voluntary at this point? That's, okay, he's expanding his, okay. Very good. Okay, we have a motion second. Any further? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, number three.
Item C3 is a resolution approving the Community Development Block Grant 2015 through 2020 Consolidated Plan and Strategy, and the 2015-2016 One-Year Action Plan, and authorizing the city manager to submit all requested documentation for the fiscal year 2015-16 CDBG program and amendments thereto to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and declaring an effective date.
Let's open the public hearing on C3. If anyone would like to come forward and speak to this item only? Okay. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel?
Do we need a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. Are there any discussions? I see we've got clean copies of the, these are both for this item? Okay. For your leisurely reading? No discussion?
Are there any changes to this from what we've seen before?
Probably proofing corrections, grammatical corrections, but no substantive changes.
That's correct. It's mostly, there's quite a bit of grammatical corrections and whatnot, but there are no substantive changes since you seen. That's a clean copy for you.
I gave them extensive edits on both versions. I mean, the five-year and the one-year. So, I guess a fresh set of eyes kind of helped, maybe.
Definitely helps.
Thank you.
It was tough reading, believe me.
I'm well aware.
I want to tell Mr. Mayfield, thank you for you and your staff for jumping through all these U.S. government hoops to keep this program going.
Thank you. I had two, two staff members that spent about a part of the summer, Darla Sims and Will Charles, our new planner, I think they're somewhere around the Yonk and Wave, that spent a great deal of their summer working on this. So, appreciate their efforts. Thank you for the compliments.
Very good. No further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, Jared. Number four?
Item C4 is to discuss and approve an ordinance by the city council of the city of Victoria, Texas, authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery of City of Victoria, Texas Utility System Revenue Refunding Bonds, Series 2015B, approving and authorizing an official statement and the distribution thereof, a purchase contract, an escrow agreement, and a paying agent registrar agreement, approving and authorizing all other instruments and procedures related thereto, delegating authority to the mayor or the city manager to select outstanding bonds to be refunded, and approve all final terms of the bonds, declaring an emergency, and providing for an immediate relief. Mayor, a reminder that because this is an emergency reading, we will need formal approval of five members.
Okay. Well, let's open the public hearing. If anyone would like to come forward and discuss this item specifically. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, need a motion?
I can motion approve C4.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion is second. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ms. Gleason.
This bond issue is going to be for $8.175 million.
Correct.
Are we going to replace that figure in the upcoming budget for the $10,000 that's in there right now, when you do the refi? Because I think right now, the balance sits at $10,000 in the books.
If you're referring to the amortization of the debt service calls?
The principal, yes.
If time, we will, if everything gets going the way it is.
Okay, so then, this figures what's going to appear in our budget?
It's not in the budget right now.
Okay, but it will be?
Eventually, yes. Final version.
Okay.
That'd be in September, final vote.
Okay. And the savings for the 467-175, that's the net after we pay all our refi costs and everything?
Approximately.
Yes. And we actually have some updated numbers. They were ran at latter part of July, and actually looking at a little over $500,000 in gross savings.
Okay. And the maturity date, is it still going to stay the same?
Yes, ma'am. These are, what's being refunded, or what's being presented is maturities in 2016 through 2021, and that would be the same on the refunded deal.
Okay.
How'd you get it over 500? You anticipate a lower rate?
Yes, the actual market has turned a little bit in the favor. This was submitted, I think the numbers were ran, it was early, early July, and Dusty had ran some numbers July 24th, and then he confirmed with the desk, actually before he left, and said that it's actually, it's in the ballpark, maybe it's increased just a bit. And we'll be in the market on Tuesday of next week, so this will, you know, hopefully be able to maintain those savings.
So, instead of the 235, what do you, what's your guess?
The total, let's see revised, let's see, I'm looking at a bunch of different numbers, 2.18%.
Okay.
I don't know if Dusty has a guess as a...
That's our, that's our last number, was 2.18%. I talked to our desk today, and they felt like you'd be riding that.
Yeah. Can you get me some of that money? That's pretty good. Excellent. I'm sorry, y'all, comment?
Bond rating, right now, we're...
Andrew.
We were affirmed at a double A minus on the utility system. We had our bond rating calls July 28th, so I guess that was last week, and they affirmed the double A minus on all utility system. We actually did the...
That's different than the general fund.
Yes, the CO and GO side is, we did a rating agency then as well, and they actually are still coming back with the rating, but we expect to be affirmed at the same level on the, on the GO side, as the double A. There are a couple grammatical issues, or I guess a couple changes, if I can point those out, mayor. In the actual resolution on pages four and 14, it references different series. It should reference the Series 2005 bonds. So, if we can incorporate those two amendments.
Make a motion to amend. Page four and page, what was it?
14.
14. Where it says 2007 and 2009?
Yes, sir. On page four, it's in Section C, under delegation of authority to select, it should be Series 2005 bonds.
Page 14, where it says...
Page 14, it's at the first full paragraph in bold, that should be Series 2005 bonds.
So, that 2007 and 2009 reflect 2005?
Correct.
That's my amendment.
I'm moved. I second that you're making a motion to amend.
Yes.
Were you clear enough on that, everybody? So, a motion is second to amend the initial motion for C4. Is there discussion on the amending motion? Any questions, clarification?
One other comment, mayor, if I may. I don't know if Andrew, I know he's probably talking, thinking about it, but this is our second refunding we did within this year. I don't know if you remember that, a few months ago. Assuming that this transpired, this present, the savings plus the other, we're looking closer to $900,000 in the total saving itself. So, just want to let you know. On top of the other CO we refunded, so we're doing pretty good.
Very good, yeah. Glad that our name of the firm, who do we have with us?
RBC.
RBC is helping us with that, keeping an eye on it, and it's important, you know, people know we're doing the best we can. So, thank you, Justin, yeah.
One other minor, while we're doing that, on discussion, if you go to page 29, under B, towards the last, you might want to strike on, you're duplicating on the date and saying it twice. That may just be for y'all to do so. Under B, about the third line up from that paragraph, you're repeating yourself there.
It's at page 29, Mr. Roberts?
Yes. Y'all see that?
Number two.
It says on the date, on the date, the governing body. I don't think you need an amendment for that.
It's non-substantive. I don't think we need to make an amendment, but if you'd like to include that in your motion to amend, I'm sure that Ms. Scott would be willing to second that.
I'll include it.
Thank you. Unless there's objection, and we have to resort to formally retracting the amendment, I think we can handle that informally.
It's just a grammatical thing.
Okay. No more?
Enjoy the late-night reading.
We'll make sure Mr. Noel Valdez is aware of the changes on the resolution as well.
Well, let's, let's vote on the motion, the amending motion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. So, now we have the motion second for the item as a whole.
As amended.
As amended, excuse me. And again, thank you for this. This is really, it's always good to see us finding that extra money out of there. I had a conversation with someone the other day about a Texas city bragging about not having no debt. And then when I reminded them, yeah, they don't have any debt on their general fund, they have hundreds of millions on their utility fund, but that particular city likes to tell everybody they have no debt. So, you know, it's really, really interesting to me. But I know that we guys, you know, you guys manage this well, so I'm confident in that. Any further discussion on this item? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Passes. Thank you.
That takes us to the consent agenda. There are five items remaining on the consent agenda tonight. Item D1 is the approval of minutes of the regular meeting of July 21st, 2015. D2 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to renew the annual supply contract for gasoline and diesel fuels with new distributing company based on the Victoria Placido Oil Price Information Service, daily branded low rack price for an estimated total amount of $1,149,245, and declaring an effective date. Item D3 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to renew the suddenly commercial service order and agreement for dedicated internet services in an estimated amount of $28,800, and declaring an effective date. Item D5 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Victoria Engineering Incorporated, doing businesses urban engineering, for topographic surveying of downtown water sanitary sewer replacement phase four projects 4A, 5A, and 5A. of downtown water sanitary sewer replacement phase four projects 4A, 5A, and 6A in the amount of $110,624 and declaring an effective date. And item D6 is a resolution authorizing the purchase of a replacement aerator, gearbox, and drive motor for the regional wastewater treatment plant from Motion Industries Incorporated in the amount of $26,554.98, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the purchase and declaring an effective date.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Okay, motion and second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
There's no discussion on consent agenda?
We skipped that one, we'll take that up next.
Yeah, it's okay. Okay. Those opposed? Okay.
All right.
Thank you, thank you.
Ms. Scott was asking about item D4, which is the one item that was pulled from the consent agenda, and as presented on the agenda, it reads, "A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to fabricate and install a replacement lamp post in Deleon Plaza with Southern Pattern Works Incorporated, Victoria Precision Alloys, and Goyan Electric for a combined total of $42,565 and declaring an effective date." Mr. Mayor, we pulled this item in order to add a revision to the document. I've passed out a revised CM1 to each of you that highlights the change in order to add in $1,260 worth of additional cost. I would ask the mayor to entertain a motion to adopt a revised resolution, changing the total dollar figure to $43,825 to include this additional cost, and then I'll let the Parks Department explain the reasoning behind the change.
I make that motion?
Second.
Okay, to accept the revised one?
To accept the revised one, not the original.
Okay. Questions?
I was just going to give a brief explanation for the addition. As of the previous council meeting, it was brought to my attention by Superior Pattern Works that they needed to make a revision. They forgot to add the access door that needs to be added to the base of the lamp post. And since then, we've had it added in there and the contract drawn up. And so it's correct now, we're just waiting for signatures back.
Okay, I see. Little door that opens up.
Okay, you said this was a result of a traffic accident? Did it, it seems like there was a tree close to it. Was the tree okay? Are we going to have to replace a tree, according to the picture that y'all gave us? How could the lamp get hit, not the tree?
The picture attached to the CM1 is actually on the, that is the lamp post on the corner of Forest and Main Street. I didn't have an actual picture of the one standing on Bridge and Constitution, which is the one that is no longer existing that we're trying to replace.
But there wasn't a tree next to it?
If there was, and if there is, it's fine. There was no damage to a tree.
I have a couple of questions. Do we get to keep the pattern, or is it a one-time pattern?
Yes, we do. We get to keep the pattern.
God.
Okay. And then are we doing LEDs on the lighting?
Right now, we have in there is just new bulbs. I do not believe that they're LEDs, but I can check into that and find out for sure.
Wouldn't be historically accurate.
If you get the right light, make it look the same.
That'd be a good idea to do that, you know?
Yeah, I can definitely look into that for you.
Okay. And insurance. Is this all getting submitted?
It's my understanding that it's being paid for by the driver's insurance rather than by our insurance.
Very expensive lamp post. I almost dropped my agenda when I read it. But it's being, we're not paying for it, it's being reimbursed, which is very important. And, you know, I was talking to our city manager about this, and we both agreed that if we put just any old lamp post back up there, we would probably get a lot of feedback. So it needs to match. We've gone to great pains to take care of that Deleon Plaza, including the expense of the gazebo, et cetera. And you're exactly right, we keep the mold. So if we lose another one, we should theoretically, many years from now, be able to make it a lot cheaper.
Yes.
So, very good. Any further discussions on D4? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Resolutions?
Item E1 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a preservation incentive program grant agreement with Edward and Valerie Wright for a project consistent with the city's preservation incentive program in the amount of $5,678 and declaring an effective date.
So move?
Second.
Motion and second. Are there any questions on this one? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Item E2 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a preservation incentive program grant agreement with Mary T. Rangel for a project consistent with the city's preservation incentive program in the amount of $13,000 and declaring an effective date.
Move we adopt E2? Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion on this one?
For the sake of transparency, I have to abstain because she's a client.
Okay. I eat there sometimes, but I'm not gonna, I'm still gonna vote, so. I understand, thank you for that. So, any discussions on this one beyond? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Item E3 is a resolution granting a variance to Section 21-54B2 of the Victoria City Code related to subdivision and development, which requires right-of-way dedication for lots fronting on a primary arterial street for Lynn's addition re-subdivision number eight, owned by Jeffrey and Lisa Kano, and declaring an effective date.
Move we adopt E3?
Second.
Motion and second. Is there a discussion? Questions? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Item passes?
Item E4 is a resolution appointing Gilbert P. Raina Jr., CPA, as the representative to perform the effective tax rate and rollback calculations according to Section 26.04(c) of the Texas Tax Code and declaring an effective date.
Second.
Can, can we do four, five, and six together, or?
We can, if you'd like.
Is that okay, you guys? They're all, unless y'all don't want Mr. Raina to do all this work.
All right. We'll collectively vote on that item, as well as number five, a resolution authorizing the publication of notice of 2015 tax year proposed property tax rate in accordance with Section 140 dash, excuse me, 140.010 of the Local Government Code and rules of the Texas Comptroller as calculated effective tax rate data has been delivered to the city by the Texas Assessor and declaring an effective date. And item E6, which is a resolution calling for a public hearing on the 2015-2016 City of Victoria budget on August 27th, 2015, September 1st, 2015, September 8th, 2015, and September 15th, 2015, all at 5:00 PM at the Council Chambers, 107 West Wanlin Street, and declaring an effective date.
So let's get a new motion on those three together.
Make a motion to approve items E5, E6, and E7.
E4.
I'm sorry, E. I make a motion to approve items E4, E5, and E6.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. No discussion on those. Everybody understands what they are. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Now, we're going to do E7 at the very end?
That's correct.
So we'll move past that and do number...
E8 is a resolution directing the publication of notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation of the City of Victoria in the maximum principal amount of $3,085,000, which includes the amounts of bonds plus anticipated costs of issuance, for the purpose of paying all or a portion of the city's contractual obligations incurred to construct, improve, repair city streets and sidewalks, together with landscape, drainage, utility line replacements, traffic, and street signalization and lighting improvements, and to pay all of the city's contractual obligations for professional services rendered by engineers, attorneys, and financial advisors in connection with the above projects, collectively called the project, and certificates of obligation and declaring an effective date.
Make a motion to approve item E8?
Second.
Okay. Motion and second. Is there a discussion?
Mayor, if I may, this is the, is a required step to issue the notice of intent. The first housekeeping, I guess, if I can request an amendment on the amount, we'd like to change that to read, principal amount of $2,581,500.
Can you repeat that?
Yes, sir. It's $2,581,500. And this was put into the CM, or into the council packet at the $3 million, which would have been the higher amount that we were possibly expecting, but with certified values coming in, basically that'll leave 2.5 million for basically proceeds that'll go to the 2016 residential street construction program. The remaining 81,500 will cover cost of issuance, that's covering things such as bond counsel, financial advisor fees, et cetera. Next step moving forward from here is we'll work with bond counsel should this get approved tonight, and they'll do the formal publications, which will occur tomorrow, August 5th, and next Wednesday, August 12th. Those are both Wednesdays, even though the CM1 said they're Sundays. So publications the next two Wednesdays. And then, again, we had the rating calls last week. We'll be back in front of you on September 10th. That'll be the confirmation of the actual sale, and then we'll actually take this to market on September 15th. So I'll be happy to address any questions you may have, and then to entertain that amendment to the resolution.
Mayor, I'll make amendment to, to the amount, principal amount to $2,581,500.
Second.
Okay, so a motion and second to amend it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, as presented. So that difference is basically the lower-than-anticipated total appraisals of, okay. It's really draws, you know, I know that no one likes taxes and appraisals, but it's a direct correlation to valuations, to money for streets, because every bit of this is pretty much going for streets. So, just interesting. And you explained the whole process very well. This is just your, part of the procedure of declaring the intent to issue these. So, very good. And then we'll, RBC will help you get that money real cheap, hopefully, so we can spread it as far as we can. Very good. Are there any questions, council?
This is part of the $2 million that we're going to be doing every two years, I mean, every year, for the maintenance of the streets?
Street maintenance.
Yeah, street maintenance.
It's a reconstruction street program.
Right, right, okay.
Not the maintenance part, just reconstruction of it.
Oh, the construction?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have those projects listed if, go ahead.
I was gonna say that it's, every year depends on the CIP itself and appraisals and projections.
Okay.
Are the projects listed in here? I glanced, but I didn't see them.
They're not in the CM1. I have those handy, and it actually, the total 2016 residential street construction is actually 4.2 million. So we'll be putting the 2.5 from this bond sale. We have just under a million dollars from leftover bond proceeds on hand, and then the difference of $740,000 will be coming from general fund. And if you want the specific dollar amounts on these projects, I can give those to you, but we're doing proposed to Hanselman Road from Anthony Street to Highway 59, North Street from Delmar to Anthony, Southwest Ben Jordan Street, Ben Jordan Concrete Section to Hand Road, North Heights Phase Two Streets, Oliver Welder Subdivision, and then Anthony Road, Lone Tree to Rio Grande.
The North Street section, say that again?
Delmar to Anthony Street?
Where's Anthony?
Over by the school, by Taurus and fire station.
Get down to that railroad crossing eventually. The railroad crossing by our service center is incredible, so. Y'all know that. Okay. I was hoping maybe, I wasn't sure. Okay.
We're going to the loop.
Huh?
We're going to the loop.
I know that some of this is just repair, and probably all we can do is repair them, but somewhere in here, I hear the word reconstruct also, and that makes me want to say, you know, let's look at the design, if we've got any right-of-way, and if we've got any extra money, that maybe we can look at some bike lanes. I know that that's something that people are asking about, too. At first, they end up being bike lanes that go nowhere, but I, especially over there by Taurus School, there are some kids that might, when they're a little bit older, might ride their bikes. I don't know that the road right-of-way is wide enough, but that's just sort of a general going forward. If we don't look ahead, if we don't plan, if we don't think about it, it won't happen.
Okay. Let's see, where are we? Have a motion to amend, is that correct?
Right.
All those in favor of the motion to amend, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, now we have a motion on the item itself. Okay, all those in favor of D8, E8, excuse me, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that passes. City manager reports.
Thank you. The first report is, this time of the year, usually Lynn comes back and gives an update on major construction projects that have been going on this year to give you an idea of when they're going to be complete. So he's got a nice handout to go over all the projects. He's going to just hit the high points, and then it'll be additional late-night reading for you, Mr. Alvarez.
You already gave us a four-inch book.
I know, I know. Additional late-night, but, so if you see a project and have specific questions, just call me, call Lynn, we'll answer them. But those major ones, everybody's asking questions about, he's going to go over.
Certainly. Good evening, Mayor and council. As the manager said, that is a complete listing of the current construction projects that are underway, and I'm going to just give you a real brief report here on some of the more higher-profile projects there. The first of those is Ball Airport Road Extension. As you know, that is a $2.52 million project to extend a concrete section of Ball Airport Road from its current end behind Highland and Hills Two subdivision, over toward North Side Road, where it would join with the section of Ball Airport that was put in when Tuscany subdivision was constructed. Currently, today, the final paving has been completed. It was done, completed on July 30th. What is left to do there is install the curb and gutter, and also install the sidewalk. We believe that the curb and gutter will be complete by mid-August, and then with the sidewalk will go in, and we think the project will be substantially complete by the mid-September. And that should coincide with the opening of the fire station there. We're going to try to keep the road closed until the sidewalks end, but if we get in a pinch and need to open it prior to that in order to facilitate the fire station, we can open it and the sidewalks can be constructed with it open. It's just safer and easier for the contractor if we keep it closed until they're in. The other thing that remains then, of course, is installation of the street lighting, and Victoria Electric is, Co-op is currently working on pole locations for that street lighting. So that project's moving forward now. The next project I want to touch base with you on is the traffic signal installation at Business 59 and Loop 463. That is a $338,000 joint project where we're partnering with TexDOT to install that traffic signal. The contractor there has completed the installation of all the foundations for both the cabinets and the poles. The poles and mast arms have been installed. We are awaiting delivery of the controller cabinets. They are expected to be in by mid-August, and then we think the final completion of that light by the first or second week of September. Of course, once it's complete, we'll put it into flash mode for about five days before we actually go live with it. So that is also moving forward. Another high-profile project is the Odom Street Wastewater Plant. That is a $15.6 million project to construct a 4.4 million gallon per day activated sludge wastewater treatment facility on an 80-acre parcel of land that lies between Odom Street and Southwest Ben Jordan Street and adjacent to Hand Road. The contractor there has been working and is almost complete with the concrete portion of the main process structure there. They expect to be through with it by the end of August. They're working on what we call the UV structure. It's the, where the ultraviolet disinfection will occur. That is being worked on. And then they'll still need to put in an admin building, and several other smaller ancillary building, and the headwork structure. They have started to receive some of their process equipment, pumps and stuff that will be installed there. Overall, they're, they're a little bit behind schedule because of the, all the rain we had in the early part of the year, but they're expected to make that time up now as we're, as we're in, they've been experiencing good weather, and we've been allowing them to work some Saturdays to try to catch up. Councilman Alvarez asked specifically about some of the, where we were with the status of some of the terms of the agreement we reached with the concerned citizens. I got one more if you can hand out. I have a status sheet on those for you also that we'll pass out, but basically the answer is, all 11 of those terms have either already been met, or they were designed into the project and just haven't been built yet. We have installed the monitoring wells on site to, to get baseline data on the groundwater. We've already sampled those and analyzed that water, and we are planning on sampling the water from Miss McNary's well on Odom Street there Thursday of this week. We've hired Be Environmental to come collect that sample and do that baseline analysis for us. So with regard to those terms... So with regard to those terms, everything that we've agreed to, we have either already done, or we've designed into the process, and they will be built as we move forward.
Lynn, just as a reminder, the time-lapse photography on the YouTube.
Yes, it's on...
You can watch some of the construction that's going on. It's updated monthly, OC? Okay.
Interesting.
Is there a link to that somewhere on the city's website?
Under the YouTube symbol.
YouTube symbol.
On the, yeah, on the homepage, when you come up on the homepage.
In association with that project, the Odom Street Offsite Utilities is a $4.1 million project to construct all of the water and wastewater lines and sludge lines going to and from that new plant, and also the roadway entering that plant. That project, the contractor's completed all the line work. The road is in place and complete. They're waiting on the river elevation to drop below seven feet, so that they can install the flap gate in that 60-inch effluent line there. It's at eight feet currently, so hopefully, that'll happen. They're continuing to remove all the spoiled dirt that was excavated during the installation of those lines, and take it to the Willa Street Plant.
You just said you wanted the river to go down?
I know. Just for a very short period.
Didn't let that go by.
Just to seven, and not...
Sorry.
Yes, sir. Anyway, they're hauling dirt to the Willa Street Plant, so that once this plant comes online, they can do the demolition of that plant and level it. What's left to do primarily on that project is road, street work, street repair, that were, streets that were torn up during that construction. Contractor is having a hard time getting a street subcontractor on board with them. We're pushing on that, and we will get it done. The final project, unless you have questions on any of the others, is the, and it's not under construction yet, but the Highway 77 Annexation Project, which is a $2.95 million project designed to extend water and sewer lines about a mile north on Highway 77. That project has been in design, has been designed. We have just recently completed the easement acquisition that was required for that project. We have advertised for bids, and we'll be opening bids next Wednesday, August 12th, and hope, hopefully, we'll bring that to you for award on September 1st, on that evening. That's all the projects I plan to go over. Certainly, if you have any questions on any of the others, I'll try to address them. And of course, anytime beyond this evening, if you have questions about them, please just contact my office, through the city manager's office, and we'll get you an answer.
Are we still posting the project status on the website?
It is on the website. Updated monthly.
Question? Hurry it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
Mayor and counsel, I'm presenting from here tonight, because I'm presenting a program to you tonight on a juvenile case manager proposal. I'm joined tonight by Sherri Norrit, who's the municipal court administrator, and Tiffany Toda, the deputy who works on the juvenile program. And I would be remiss if I did not point out to you tonight, and remind you, that the accountability of the municipal court program that we've seen increasing over the last several years comes directly from Ms. Norrit. You've heard me talk several times about municipal court being the place where we encourage people to take care of business, and that is, that is coming directly from her. And I think that the work that she's doing in municipal court, combined with excellent Judge Constance Philly-Johnston, who's with us also here tonight, and a fabulous prosecutor, Ms. Amanda Pierce, is probably the best team that we've had in municipal court. It's definitely the best team we've had in municipal court since I've been here as city attorney. And I just want to commend them to you for the great job that they're doing. But what I'm really here tonight to talk about is juvenile justice, which is a very complicated subject, and I'm gonna try to keep this as short as possible, because I know we're getting late in the evening. I don't want to go into the entire philosophy behind juvenile justice unless you have specific questions. But as support for the request I'm gonna make tonight, I do want to point out that juvenile justice is a very complicated issue. As one example to illustrate the complicated nature of juvenile justice, if you take a 16-year-old defendant, who, let's say, has committed a Class A or Class B misdemeanor offense, like an assault, that criminal assault case is diverted into the juvenile probation system, where it's not really handled entirely like a criminal matter, it's handled more like a civil matter. And when that 16-year-old turns 17, it gets dismissed and removed from that person's permanent record. But if the same 16-year-old commits a lesser offense, a Class C traffic offense, for example, that's gonna get handled through a municipal or justice court as a criminal matter, just as any other criminal matter, and will remain on that person's criminal record for the rest of their life. And that creates a confusion, I think, among a lot of people about how juvenile justice is being handled. We frequently will have young adults, 18- or 19-year-olds, come into municipal court to try to take care of a juvenile offense, because they're trying to get into the military, and the military will not take them with an open criminal offense. And when they do, we will frequently hear the comment, "Well, I thought this was gonna disappear when I turned 18." It doesn't. And because of that confusion, I think there winds up being a lessened amount of accountability. If a juvenile thinks that this is going to go away, and they don't have to take care of it, they're less likely to come in and take care of their business. That lessened accountability is really exacerbated when you consider the fact that the municipal court cannot issue a warrant for a juvenile offense, which means our greatest method of increasing accountability is really taken away from us, and we're hamstrung, in many cases, in trying to handle juvenile cases. I say all of that just to say, juvenile justice is a complicated issue, and it is a situation that we require some additional help with. I've presented you with some information tonight, a report, written report in your materials, and I'm asking tonight that you consider approving a juvenile case manager program for municipal court. The goal of a juvenile case manager program is to try to encourage and increase the accountability of juvenile defendants. Whenever they come into court, I believe that our goal as juvenile justice in municipal court should be to teach and encourage that accountability in our juvenile defendants. Because the earlier we teach that, that they are accountable for their actions, the more likely they will be to be responsible for their business later on in life. The best way that we can encourage that and increase that in municipal court, I believe, is through the creation of this additional halftime position called a juvenile case manager. That position would then, because it's additional staff time, would have more time to go locate those juveniles, and to follow up with juvenile defendants who have become delinquent in taking care of their own business, so that we can get those people into court and get their, get them to take care of their business. Because the juvenile case manager would also manage the juvenile docket, the juvenile case manager would be able to file additional cases against the parents who have thus far not brought their juveniles to court, in essence, transferring the accountability to the parents, in the hope that the parent will then transfer the accountability back to the child. The total purpose of this program is to encourage those juveniles to get into the court system, to get them to take care of their business, so that we can continue to hold citizens accountable for the behavior in the city. In order to do that, it would require that the council adopt a new fee. The state law provides the option for the city council to adopt a $5 fee on each criminal violation that comes through municipal court. That additional, that fee is in addition to a $1 fee that is currently being collected, that's known as the truancy prevention fund fee. Those two fees together would produce approximately $30,000 of additional new revenue that is dedicated specifically to the juvenile case manager program, and cannot be used for other programs. It is not general fund money. With that additional funds, the municipal court would create a halftime position known as the juvenile case manager. We expect the first-year cost of that program to be around $17,000, which would include startup costs, like furniture and a computer, as well as the recurring annual costs of salary and training. Thereafter, that amount might decrease a minor amount, due to the fact that we wouldn't have startup costs every year. What I'm asking tonight, counsel and mayor, is that you give me your consensus to bring back to you an ordinance that would adopt that fee, and create that juvenile case manager program that would allow us to hire an additional halftime staff member in municipal court. And I'm available for any questions you might have.
That fee, when it's collected, would it be kept here, or does it have to go somewhere and then brought back as a grant?
That fee is, it's my understanding that that fee, Andrew, is collected and stays here locally and is not remitted to the state. Is that correct, Andrew? Okay.
Okay. Seems like I heard something recently about the legislature removing truancy funds. Have you heard that? The fines for truancy?
I haven't heard that, no. The truancy fund was only created about two years ago. Was that in the last session? And the idea was that it's a $2 fee that's added on, but a dollar of it gets remitted back to the state. We get to keep $1 of it if we're exploring a juvenile case manager, or have a juvenile case manager.
Not that fee, I'm talking about this, is there another, what is the, what are the fines for truancy? That's a disposal fee you're talking about, right? That's a processing related.
Right. What I'm talking about is a processing fee.
The other, I think the other fine.
There, you may be talking about the criminal offense of truancy, failure to attend a school district? And I'm not familiar with that, I'm sorry.
Okay. I don't know that it's relevant here. I was thinking it might be, but...
No, I don't think it's related. It gets confusing, because that $1 fee, well, it's a $2 fee, is called the truancy fund, even though it's not directly related to truancy. I think the $1 that the state keeps, they're using for truancy-related programs, but I'm not sure about that. I think that's where it gets its name.
So the problem is, you're saying that, and this is under 17, so 16 on down, and something happens, and they don't show up. You cannot issue a warrant. You don't know where they are, or you call the house and they don't answer?
That's exactly right.
You can't compel them to get them in?
In many cases, we don't have information about where they are. The juvenile case manager would work with the school districts and the school resource officers that are located in the districts to try to track those kids down. In cases where we do know where they are, we have the option, we have the legal ability right now, to file charges against the parents for failure to bring those kids into court. What we don't have is the staff time to create all those charges. And so by creating the juvenile case manager program, we're hoping that the additional time would allow us to do that.
What is the school district? Now, they can't tell you, I mean, first of all, every one of these aged children, by law, have to attend school. Every 16-year-old, if they're not in school, they're violating another law, which is another issue. So they're compelled to go. But the school district can't call you and say, "Hey, he's here today at school." They can't do that, right? So I'm just, you work, I don't mean to get off in the weeds, but I'm just curious how this works.
I'm not familiar with that limitation on, and so Judge Johnson is here. She may be able to answer that question better than me.
I think that Mr. Gush is giving us some examples of ways that we could be more proactive on the front end, if we had the staff time to dedicate to it. Really, it's just a matter of tracking the young people down. Typically, what I see on the tail end of things is a young person in their early 20s, who had a ticket issued to them at 15 or 16, and never took care of it, and then a hold was placed on their driver's license, which is state law. So they've had an inability to obtain a driver's license, and that has snowballed then into additional problems for them. But had we had the opportunity to be more proactive in contacting them and getting them to take care of their business, we might, could have prevented that situation. So it's giving us some tools to dedicate some staff time to tracking those folks down, whether it be through the school district, or any number of different ways, to get them in here to handle their citations.
So basically, right now, you don't, they just vanish, and it never gets disposed of?
Correct. Next time we see them is when they're here on another matter.
You're making, you're not able, due to the lack of staff time, et cetera, to make that extra effort?
Correct.
The majority of juvenile cases are processed and are taken care of. There's about 60% of the cases that have come through the juvenile docket are already being handled. People are taking care of their business the right way. But that 60% is a lower number than the adult cases. And we're trying to close that gap.
Yeah, you had 71% in your report for adults and 60.
What does that represent in cases?
Total number of cases per year?
On an average annual basis?
Juvenile is a percentage of the overall? Is that what you're saying?
Oh, just cases?
Well, I guesstimated about 5,000. He said he collected $30,000 on the $6 per, that's 5,000 cases. I don't know if that's right.
Tiffany is saying perhaps 200 to 300 juvenile cases per year. Total number of citations coming through municipal court on any given year is 12,000?
We average about 1,100 a month.
About 1,100 a month, cases coming through municipal court.
You're talking about juvenile cases between 200 to 300 a year?
No.
Or monthly?
How many per month? You just said 1,100?
That's regular.
That's total.
Regular.
That's regular, so...
Right, I'm sorry, I gave you the, I gave you the total number in months, 1,100 a month, and then I gave you the juvenile number in annual, which is 200 to 300 a year. Sorry for that confusion. It's about 30 juvenile cases a month.
Which the 200 seems like a very low number, but compared to what we have to do with the juvenile, is, it's a lot of processes. Everyone 16 years or younger has to be summoned into court. They have to see the judge. They, oh, excuse me, they have to come in and see the judge. Even if a 16-year-old gets a traffic citation, they have to come into court, they have to come see the judge, we have to send them a notice, we have to send them a summons. So that seems like a very low number, but as far as work, it's a very, it's a lot of work for 16-years-or-younger that...
Well, you probably have in the thousands that have not been disposed of.
We have thousands that have not been taken care of. They're just open on...
They're languishing in the age and everything else.
And that goes back years.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Well, I have a real problem with, okay, I'm gonna read to you here. The court therefore projects that adding the additional $5 juvenile case manager fee would generate 30,000 per year. $5 times, how many? 300?
No. No, I'm sorry, that's for every citation.
Everybody.
Every citation written will get the $5.
Adult or juvenile?
Yes.
Okay, this says juvenile.
It's like the technology fund and the building security that we, that the city's already approved.
Okay.
If that gives you a comparison.
Okay.
I'd like to make a point, too. This is not funded in the general fund, so if the revenues coming in do not sustain to pay for this part-time position, then the position goes away. It's not, we're not putting money in the general fund for this position.
That's correct.
So the question is, bring it back, and you need, is an ordinance?
It would be an ordinance adopting the fee, and that's why I want to get consensus from counsel to bring it back for consideration at a later date.
Define the case manager specialist, or someone in the office already, or...
We would be adding a halftime position that, we're not sure who exactly would be filling that position yet. But it would be a new halftime position that would handle the juvenile case manager duties.
So if an adult gets cited, he's gonna have to pay for the juvenile case manager?
If a parent doesn't bring their, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I misunderstood your question. If I get a speeding ticket in municipal court, then my speeding ticket will include that $5 fee, yes. Even though I'm an adult, it's all citations.
But this is, I think, just to be clear, this is only collected on conviction. So it's not if you are stopped speeding, it's because we want to collect a $5 fee from you.
Right. It's only on conviction. That's right.
And Thomas, just for clarification, because I know there's people doing math up here. You said that there's approximately 200 juvenile cases a year, and 40% of those are the ones that you'll have, 60% take care of business, so 40% do not, out of the 200.
200 to 300 was the number that we...
Okay, 200 to 300. So you're dealing with 40% of, let's say, 300, that do not comply, and that's what the case...
That's what the juvenile case manager would be working on.
And it already catches up with them if they have a license that they can't renew, or...
In many cases, that's where we catch them. That's probably the best tool that we have, is putting a hold on their driver's license. I'll tell you that that system is not foolproof, nor does it catch all of the kids. As Judge Johnson just said, we frequently will have people come into the office in their mid-20s, who have had a hold on their license, and in some cases, they got that license renewed somehow. I'm not sure how.
So you're talking about 90 cases, pretty much a year?
I think that's...
If my math is correct.
40% of 300.
40, okay. It's 120.
80 to 120.
Okay.
Well, oh, go ahead.
There's administrative work involved with clearing an old case. There's administrative work involved with clearing an old case. I mean, it's not that they come in and say, "Oh, I made a mistake here, let me pay the fine," and, I mean, so what you're trying to do is head off some of that as well.
Absolutely. Anytime that we're dealing with an old case and somebody coming in, you've got a substantial amount of workload, whether you have a juvenile case manager or not.
Chairman, is this halftime position included in the budget for this term?
No, ma'am, it is not.
So it would be something that we would add before the adoption of the budget?
We weren't planning on it. It will, that fund will go into a special revenue.
What would happen would be, if council goes forward with this, I will add a new fund to the budget, but not general fund. It'd be a separate, own standalone fund, and I do that amendment down the road.
It does not, it will not go toward the general fund FTE count or anything.
Okay, so would it be like a budget amendment later on? Because you're not going to wait a year to start this position, are you?
There's some money right now that's been collected that I assume will be used to...
They have some money in there, and the recommendation is go ahead and set up the fund now, and when we start the budget process in August, I'll come back. That'd be one of the amendments that I'll be proposing to add to the 2016 budget.
That's what I was asking.
In addition to the other special revenue funds, yes.
But currently, the budget that we're looking at tonight, it's not going to have it?
It's not in there right now.
Okay.
Outside of it, I guess you could say, outside of the current budget. For now. I just, you know, and I, I trust you guys, especially, you know, you and the ladies behind you, I know y'all do great work over there, and anytime we add a person, you know, that goes into perpetuity. It's not just about right now, it's about years down the road, and that position would have to understand it's subject to the variable funding of that via these collections. If everybody behaves and stops speeding, you know, they're going to be in trouble because we're not going to collect the revenue. Of course, also, there's a reluctance to add any cost to any tickets, they're already expensive, you know. It's a good time to clarify that most of the money for a ticket, you know, we don't make money off tickets, that's good, right? We really don't. We cover court costs, and a lot of it goes to state.
Quite a bit of the court cost goes to the state, that's correct.
Yeah, yeah. So the question again is, do we want to see an ordinance come back? We can talk about it then, we don't have to approve it, or we can approve it that night, but Thomas needs direction. Don't be shy, Mr. Alvarez.
I'm on the fence about it, and I don't have a problem having an ordinance up here, but I don't know quite where I stand on it yet.
It just, for me, I'd like to see the ordinance, Councilman McLaughlin. But it begs two questions, like I asked before. Show me the numbers, please, again. Tell me your caseload on an annual basis. Tell me the numbers, the backlog of numbers you plan to try to dispose of. Give me those hard numbers, and I think it justifies itself, in my opinion.
I don't, go ahead, Ms. Lynn.
Okay, because right now, we're not talking just about maybe the 100 or so for this year, we're talking about going back and trying to get some of the old accounts closed, too? The ones can still be...
Juvenile case manager would continue to work old accounts as well.
Right, okay.
That's right.
Now, there cannot be a fee attached to closing those cases as well?
Sure. We got all kind of fees.
The fee is set by state law, and so we don't have the ability to manipulate...
But we can't come administratively and add another fee?
Processing fee.
That's right, the fee will get applied under state law.
It would be from now forward, we can't go back and add $10 to anybody that's they got to do yesterday.
Well, and I was more talking about those old cases of juveniles.
Right, so if it's an old case with an old juvenile case or an old adult case, those fees were already established as of the date of that offense. So we can't go back and add that.
I have one more question.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, so you're going to be working with old cases, so that means some of these people might be adults now?
That's correct.
So you will be handling the adult part, too, I mean, if, some adults, too, then, with the old cases?
That's right, it's a juvenile offense with now an adult defendant.
Right, okay.
Well, can you issue a warrant against them now that they're an adult?
Because that was what is...
We have to have a hearing for, to do that. We would have to find those and bring them back in here and have a hearing before the judge.
Okay, no, you can't.
A lot of them, we don't know where they are, so we're going to have to try to find them, so...
Just because it's relevant to the issue, it's not relevant to, and I'm for the ordinance, bring it back, and we'll debate it some more then, but it's just interesting to me, you know, working in the school business as I do, and I know you have too, Thomas, they know where their kids are. I just, I wonder if there's a solution in Austin for cooperation with municipal courts? They know where they all are. I don't, but I know there's privacy issues that are very serious laws, that you can't just call up and say, "Well, let's go see them over at XYZ School," but...
I agree that generally, we know, I suspect we generally know where these kids are. That's not the real issue. The real issue is getting them into this room.
Okay, okay, point taken, I understand, okay.
Question for Thomas, with the, if there's, how was I going to phrase this? The, we're not the first ones to do a juvenile case manager.
That's correct.
What's the success rate of other cities that have utilized this?
We've talked to several cities who have various different models of juvenile case manager programs. Specifically, we went and visited with San Marcos, as well as talking to several others. Sherri, do we have specific numbers? I'm not sure that we have a specific number that I can give you in terms of percentage difference.
I just wondered, I mean, if we're running it...
I want to say San Marcos was about at an 80%, and they were working on getting it even higher than that.
They're, they're using much more of an intervention model than we would be using?
Yes, and, yes, they're more of an intervention model, plus they have a full-time, actual full-time person, and I'm not sure if they were going to try to add another person. Most courts our size have at least one full-time person, some, they're working on getting their second person. So most of the courts, or the court administrators or people that I talk to say this has been a very successful program for their city. I don't know anybody that's, that has implemented it that is going the other way and doing away with it. They're adding people, they're adding to their program, so that's, you know, just general. I want to say there was about three cities that were the same size as us that didn't have a juvenile case manager, but it was interesting to me, they had someone that actually did that job, they just called it something else, so...
I ask because I'm looking, doing some math and figuring out if there's 120, what's the, what's the per offense cost? The lower the percentage, the higher the fee in relation to it, so...
I hear what you're saying.
Okay.
So do y'all agree, do you just want to bring it back?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
The numbers that Mr. Alvarez mentioned, maybe in a spreadsheet form, and look out a couple of years, make a few projections on what you think, assuming a high effectiveness rate of what the revenue stream would look like?
Sure.
And, and I mean, this position theoretically would be funded from that fund separately, and if that fund goes away, you know, of course, any future council would have to make a decision, or you'd have to fund them out of another line item or something in your budget.
No, sir, we do not intend to fund it out of any other line item in the budget. It's understood from the beginning that this program would be contingent upon collections. If the funding doesn't meet the expense of the position, we'll eliminate it.
It's easy to say now.
I agree.
You have an employee that's in there for five years that you all get to know very well, you're going to find a way to keep them. I'm not saying that's wrong, I'm just saying that's reality, okay? So, anyway, good, good discussion, good questions. So bring it back, when will we see it?
Probably at the next council meeting, or the meeting thereafter. We should have it ready to go by the next council meeting.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, the next city manager report, we're down to delivering the budget, delivering the certified tax roll, and I've got a few just brief comments because we've got several more presentations tonight after we do this delivery. Cheryl Martha Johnny's going to speak about some employee issues. Tony Cordo is going to talk about the CBB budget. We've got, and Colby's going to talk about spending hot funds for the parks, and then, like I mentioned earlier, Amanda Rocha is here to talk about the zoo, so we've got